Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 31st, 2023, study session of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum of the council members here with council member Payne excused. We have one agenda item this evening, and that's to receive a briefing on the Washington State Office of Independent Investigations. At this time, though, I'd like to introduce the council members. I'm Mayor Cheryl Selby, and I'll go down to you.
Mayor Pro Tem Clark Gilman.
Councilmember Jim Cooper.
Councilmember Lisa Parshley.
Councilmember Ian Quinn.
Councilmember Dante Payne.
Councilmember Danny Madron.
And then we'll go to our staff. We'll start with our city manager.
Hi, I'm Jay Burney, city manager.
Debbie Sullivan, Assistant City Manager.
Rich Hoy, interim Assistant City Manager.
Mark Barber, City Attorney.
Kelly Brosid, Strategic Communications Director.
Rich Allen, Police Chief.
Sam Costello, Deputy Police Chief.
Great, thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Roger Rogoff, who is the Director of the Office of Independent Investigations.
Thank you so much, Mayor Selby and the council. We're just so honored to be here, to be invited to talk a little bit about our agency and what we're up to and the progress that we're making. My name is Roger Rogoff. I am the Director of the Office of Independent Investigations. I'm gonna let my staff introduce themselves, but I do just wanted to say, as they do that, that hiring is one of the things that is a priority for this agency. And what you're gonna get tonight is a little bit of insight into the type of hiring that we're doing here. I'm just so proud of the folks who are at this table, as well as the 13 or 14 others who work with our agency. And what you'll hear is that they all left jobs that were solid, important, government-based jobs in order to come here and work for this agency, doing this really important work. And they did that because they care about it, and because it's a mission that they want to work with. So I'll go ahead and let them introduce themselves.
Thank you. So my name is Jane Nesbit. I'm the Chief of Staff. I came from Labor and Industries. In the interim, I did stand up another agency during COVID. It was for the statewide COVID compliance. It was really popular.
My name's Hector Castro. I am the Director for Communications and Community Relations. My unit will have the media relations team on it, also the family liaisons, who will work with affected families, and our community representatives. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annette Taylor. I'm the Legislative Director for the Office of Independent Investigations, and I bring 32 years of state government service. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Berliner. I'm the Legal and Policy Advisor. I came here after 23 years at the King County Prosecutor's Office, the last 12 of which was in their homicide unit. We responded on-call to all suspicious deaths in King County and worked through the investigation. And that's the expertise I'm hoping to bring to OII.
Hi, my name is Tracy Laps. I am the Director of Investigations. My title changed overnight, because that's what we do in a new agency. I've been with OII now for about four months. And prior to that, I spent 24 years as a public defender in King County. And while we did not have any special homicide unit, and I didn't actually end up on death investigations, boots on the ground, the majority of my time was spent defending individuals charged with felonies.
Well, thank you. And I'll just turn it over to Roger to lead us through where we are, where we came from, as far as how you all started, and where we are now.
Thank you so much. And I guess I should start by just saying that it's obviously an incredibly timely moment to be talking about these issues and to be addressing how we in Washington have decided to handle the investigations of police use of deadly force cases differently than every other state in the country. And I think that that is one of the most exciting things about this office. And what we intend to do is that we are the first in the nation. The only real model for what we are doing is in British Columbia and some Canadian provinces. But we are the first agency that is completely independent of law enforcement or a prosecutor's office that will be handling these types of investigations. So when we've done some introductions, we'll talk a little bit about why the legislation was passed, what sort of led to it, why the office was established, and how we are going about doing that, how we are doing significant outreach and talking to community groups, law enforcement, and every group in between across the state to make sure that we are learning as much as we can to ensure that when we become operational, we start doing this work in real time, that we are doing it well, and we are doing it in the way that the statute envisioned it. And then finally, we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to do our investigations. And I definitely want to leave room for questions. As I said, we've been doing this outreach and talking to groups all across the state. And whenever we talk to any group, whether it be a government agency, like yourself, whether it be law enforcement, whether it be a community group, a group that has interest in police accountability, they all come with questions which end up teaching us and giving us an opportunity to impact our policies, our procedures, and how we're going to do things. So if at any time you have a question, just interrupt me. It'll be much cooler than whatever it is that I have prepared. So in the wake of a series of incidents that you are all painfully aware of from about 2014 through 2020, which really brought this issue of police use of deadly force to a head, the governor convened a task force in June of 2020, asking, how do we address this issue? How do we address the breakdown of trust between law enforcement and certain communities? And what can we do to make it better? And there were a number of proposals that came out of that, one of which was a task force on independent investigations of police use of force. And that task force put together legislation that created our office and created an independent means to investigate these cases. And I just want to stop right there and make sure that we're all on the same page in that we are an investigative agency, not a prosecutor agency, even though a number of us are former prosecutors, including myself. We are not prosecutors. Our work ends with the end of the investigation, and then we refer our cases and our reports to a prosecutor to make a decision about what to do with the case. The task force included a wide range of folks from differing backgrounds and perspectives, police accountability advocates, impacted family members, law enforcement, experts on everything from mental health to immigration, et cetera. And we're all designed to find the best way to handle these cases and make them competent, but also independent. So if we take a look at the path that we followed from that task force, after the task force was convened, legislation was presented, the legislature passed a bill, which Governor Inslee signed into law, which created our office and gave us two basic authorities. One is to investigate new cases of police use of deadly force throughout the state. And secondly, to re-investigate cases in certain circumstances that had previously undergone an investigation. And when I say under certain circumstances, those circumstances are if new evidence is brought forth that was not considered at the time of the first investigation or the initial investigation. Upon passing the legislation, I think everyone sort of realized that you can say a whole bunch of words, and you can put a bunch of words down on paper, but when you create a new office, that that is something entirely different than simply sort of creating policy. And in order to make that happen, Governor Inslee appointed a transition team, which consists of four people, including Jane Nesbit, who's sitting to my right. So she's been involved in this since the very beginning. That transition team had two main jobs, although they did a lot of other things. And those two main jobs were to find a director, and then firstly, before that, is to appoint an advisory board. And they took their time in finding the right people for both of those jobs. With regard to the advisory board, it is an 11-member board, which, just like the task force, has a very diverse background. We have law enforcement officers, police chief on it. We have a prosecutor, Clark County Prosecutor Tony Golick is on it. We also have impacted family members, such as Fred Thomas and Po Leapi. We have experts in immigration, experts in mental health, experts in tribal issues. And they have been an incredibly cohesive group despite the wide diversity in backgrounds, and have found consensus very easily in helping us move forward this agency. In May of 2022, the transition team was finally able to find a director. And they hired me that month, and I started in the middle of June of 2022. So I give that background because I want to make sure that when we... One of the big questions that comes up, and I know has come up in this body a lot, is what's taking so long? Where have they been? You know, what's going on? And I just want it to be clear that this team has been together for six months at this point. And while the legislation was passed in 2021, when you're standing up an agency, it takes some time to get the train moving. And I think at this point, the train is moving. And as with most trains, once it starts down the track, it picks up speed, and you'll see things happen a lot faster. Just to give a little background on me, because I think I'm the only person who didn't say anything about my background, my career started in 1993. I was a deputy prosecutor for King County for about 13 years. In the middle of that, I spent about two years as a criminal defense attorney. So I left the prosecutor's office and then came back, mostly because I didn't like running a business very much, or maybe just wasn't very good at it. So came back to government and was a prosecutor for an additional amount of time, and then was hired by the United States Attorney's Office for the Western District of Washington. So was a federal prosecutor for about six or seven years until the end of 2013, when Governor Inslee appointed me as a judge for King County Superior Court. I was a trial judge for about seven years there, left in 2020, I believe, and decided that 27 years in a courtroom was enough, and I needed something different. So left and went to Microsoft for a couple of years, worked in data protection and security and public safety. So basically, when governments requested data from Microsoft, it was my job to help figure out whether they should give that data up or not. So I'm still in the criminal justice world, but just removed from a lot of the trauma of the criminal justice world, which was a nice change for me. And then this opportunity came along in 2022, and I just couldn't get past the idea that an opportunity to make a real change in a very small but incredibly important part of the criminal justice system was a way to really start making an impact in that system as a whole. That if you can make a change here, in this incredibly emotional, difficult part of the system, then perhaps you can then take the next step and make a change in other places where that system needs it. And so, and it was in my sort of target area. It was consistent with my background, and I was just incredibly excited for the opportunity to do this work. So Governor Inslee, as well as the statute, are pretty clear that the trust and lack of transparency in many of these investigations that have resulted from these incidents is something that needed to be mended and needed to be fixed. He was very clear at the signing of the bill, and the legislative intent itself is incredibly clear about what the legislature wants here. Competent, unbiased, thorough investigations, transparent and accountable, exhibiting dignity and respect for the impacted family, as well as the law enforcement officers who are involved. And then an agency that understands the impact of historical and systemic racism throughout policing and this system, and looks at these cases through an anti-racist lens. That's the intent of the statute. That's the law. Even if I didn't believe any of that, which I do, that is what we are asked to do by the legislature. And we have committed, as a team and as an agency, to living this every day. We have made anti-racism and anti-biased training something that we start with in this agency. We have made competency, effectiveness, and efficiency part of what we want to do with every investigation. And one of the things that I have told everybody who asks, when are we going to get started? When will you be ready? Is that I am not sending any investigator to a scene of one of these incidents until they are trained, until there are policies in place so that they and everyone in the public knows what they're doing, how they're going to do it, and in what manner these investigations will be completed, and that we have sufficient resources and people to do these investigations right. The worst thing that this agency can do, and I've said this over and over, is go to a scene because we want to, and because we absolutely are dying to get involved and start doing this work, but aren't ready and do it badly. And that would, I think, be the worst thing that this agency could do for the very people who wanted us to exist. So our statute is now RCW 43102, and it requires us to do a certain number of things. First of all, it creates our office. We're under the Office of the Governor, so we're not under the AG or any other agency. We are directly under Governor Inslee. And I can tell you that what Governor Inslee told me when he appointed me was, you're not going to hear from me anymore, essentially. That this is your shop. You run it. I'm not involved in any of your investigations. I don't have anything to do with the day-to-day of what you're going to do. You are independent. And so, to the extent that those words are meaningful, I think that we have been given the opportunity to really do this work without the pressure of a political person telling us what to do. Those investigations have to be fair, thorough, transparent, and competent, and they only deal with law enforcement uses of deadly force statewide. So when you think of, for instance, an officer who shoved someone in the back, and it looks horrible on TV, and it shouldn't have been done, that is not the type of case that we're going to be handling. We're going to be handling uses of deadly force, which I think we often think of as shootings, but if we think of the Manny Ellis case in Tacoma, then you can think of cases that involved sort of hands-on uses of force that become deadly force. Deadly force is defined in the criminal statutes, and is essentially the use of force that is likely to cause death or serious physical injury. We are authorized to investigate these cases statewide, and we are only authorized to investigate Washington-commissioned peace officers. So we can't investigate federal officers. We can't investigate some tribal officers, depending on their jurisdiction. And we certainly can't investigate an officer in Oregon or another state. We've been required to appoint a director, which we've done, an advisory board, which we've done, hire investigators that are trained in how to do these investigations. I think one of the things that is in the statute is that the main thing that changes here is who does the investigations and the independence of those investigations. But the nuts and bolts of how to do a death investigation doesn't change, that we intend to do those investigations, as well as law enforcement detectives do death investigations on a daily basis, do homicide investigations on a daily basis. So we will be conducting those investigations in the way that you imagine them. We will be at the scene as soon as possible. When we get a call from an involved agency, we will be helping to secure that scene, collecting evidence, interviewing witnesses, collecting body-worn camera, collecting surveillance video, cellphone video, all of the evidence that you could imagine occurring in one of these cases will be part of the investigations that we do. We will have access to the Washington State Patrol Crime Lab for forensics. We will have access to the Washington State Patrol Crime Scene Investigation to do our, for instance, blood spatter and crime scene documentation, except in the case where Washington State Patrol is the involved agency, in which case we will be using an independent or reach out to another agency in order to provide that service to us. Another thing that really is going to make us different, and is, I think, going to have a huge impact, is the outreach we're going to do in each case. So not the type of outreach that we're doing today, but the idea that we have resources to hire family liaisons, which, if you think in a criminal context, a lot like a victim advocate, but one person who is connected to the impacted family, who provides them with community resources, as well as a communication conduit to the office, to let them know, to the extent we can, what's going on with the investigation, how's it going, where we are, et cetera. And just so that they have a face that they can trust, who is not a law enforcement officer, which we've heard from a lot of impacted families, that one of the hard things was their loved one was killed by law enforcement, and the person who came to their door was someone in the same uniform. And many folks had a real difficult time with that. Some don't, but some do. And so we have that ability. And then also, we're going to have resources for tribal liaisons. Anyone who's done any work on reservations or on Indian lands, which are words that I'm used to from the federal government, so I apologize, but it is complicated. It goes far beyond what the law is, what the jurisdiction is. And it really requires a lot of thought, a lot of respect for sovereignty, a lot of respect for the people who are on that land, and thinking about doing those cases in a way that makes sense not only to us, but also to the tribe. And so the ability to have tribal liaisons onboard to help us through those cases, and there have been some in the past, will be an incredible help and will make us look and feel different than any other agency doing these investigations. So I mentioned this before, but we have two directives. One is to investigate new cases. So anything happening, and the date we were given is July 1st, 2022. We've obviously blown past that date for the reasons that I've discussed, and the reasons that we'll talk about in a second with regard to our four priorities currently. But new cases, once we're operational, those are the ones that we have the discretion to go out to scenes on and begin those investigations from the ground up. We also, as of July of 2023, are authorized to begin investigating previous cases or prior cases, old cases, depending on how you talk about it. These are cases that were previously investigated by another agency, but there's new evidence that's come to light between that investigation and today, and somebody involved in that case is asking us to take another look. We are very close to being ready to taking those cases. We think that March-ish, we will begin having a process to submit those cases to us, both online or through the mail, and are very excited about being able to begin working on some of these investigations. So with regard to the new cases, you may be asking, well, how are you all going to do this? We're going to have six offices across the state, which we are budgeted for. Each of those offices will house currently between 6 and 10, but hopefully with this budget cycle, closer to between 12 and 15, which is really what we need, investigators who will be ready if and when a call comes out to get to the scene and begin the process of, one, deciding whether or not we are authorized and should take the case, and, number two, begin the investigation. And as part of that, the legislation indicates that we are authorized to take all uses of deadly force cases across the state, which, over the last five years, has averaged about 225 per year. However, there's also a caveat to that, recognizing that we are going to have limited resources, particularly when we first start. And they give us discretion to take those cases, and they ask us to put together policies and procedures to define exactly how we're going to decide whether or not to take a particular case. And I will tell you that as we begin to ramp up, we are very mindful of the idea that we don't want to be in a position of using that discretion in an unclear way. And so we will have policies and procedures that are very clear about which cases we will take, what factors we'll look at when deciding whether to take a case. And the main one to start with is that we will take cases that result in death. And numbers-wise, in case you're curious about that, that limits us to, it's been between about 25 to 40 a year for the last five years. This year, there were 42. So it was the most that we've had in a number of years, but it's been as low as 14 or 15 on a couple of occasions.
Just for clarification, is that fatality by any party or fatality that's non-police officer? Like in those numbers, like, could a police officer have died in that number, or is it just residents that are non-commissioned?
Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, it is civilian deaths at the hands of police officers, 25 to 40. Thank you. We'll learn about these cases because involved agencies per statute are now going to be required to call us immediately upon one of these incidents occurring. That's in the statute. We have already set up our notification system. We did that last month. It was important to us to have a sense, for a couple reasons we did that. One, to have a sense of how many we're going to get and when we're going to get calls from law enforcement. It also gives us a sense of where the gaps are, of when law enforcement isn't calling us, and maybe they should, or they are calling us when they probably don't have to, so we can work with them in streamlining that process. It also gives us an idea of resources, and it also, for the first time, allows us to connect with law enforcement agencies. And we get a sense for which agencies are ready to work with us, and which we're going to have to do a little bit more outreach and make sure that they're ready to call us when these incidents happen. So it's been a great program. So we, as the leadership of OII, have been on-call on rotating weeks over the last few months, taking calls whenever they happen. So many of us have been, you know, woken at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, told about an incident, at which point we've, for now, telling agencies that we're not ready to take these cases, but we appreciate the call, and we document that information. So that's the discretion. One of the things that we've been working very hard with law enforcement agencies on is what this handoff is going to look like. And I'll talk about it in a little more detail in a second, but for the past four to five years, since I-940 passed back in 2018, these cases have been investigated by what are called independent investigative teams, IITs, which I'm sure you all have heard of. And those are neighboring, basically a collection of neighboring law enforcement agencies who come in and take over for the involved agency and do the investigation. Those teams, those independent investigative teams, still exist, and they still have a purpose. We have not sort of obsoleted them. They will continue to handle underlying criminal investigations in these matters. So if you can imagine a bank robbery happens, two guys run out, and they pull a gun and police shoot them, and there's an investigation into, shoot one of them, investigation into the death of that civilian. And then there's also going to be an underlying investigation into the bank robbery and whatever criminal activity may have occurred there for the second person. Those, what we call concurrent investigations, will... will likely and hopefully continue to be handled by the independent investigative teams because we are not authorized to do those investigations, nor are we stood up to do them. So those teams will still exist. And they will also do the investigations for any case that, in our discretion, we decide not to take. So if it's a non-death case for right now, those IITs will continue to take those cases and do that work. So there's going to be a handoff, one way or the other, when we arrive at scenes. If you can imagine, the call comes in. Because we are statewide, it's going to take us a little longer to get to a scene than certainly the involved agency, who will be there from the beginning, and probably the IITs, who are very nearby. And so when we say, yes, we're taking this case, there is going to be a handoff or some work to be done, some partnership that needs to happen in order to make sure that we are able to do the work that we're authorized to do and that we don't slow down the investigation that is already occurring when we get there. And we want that to be smooth. So part of that is the work that Jessica and Tracy have done in reaching out to IITs across the state, beginning that in the weeds discussion about what that will look like, how it'll work, and how we can make sure that these investigations get done well. See, so I knew I was going to get to this, but as I just explained, the IITs were the previous folks who did these investigations. And as I talk about involved agencies, those are the Washington Commission agencies that were involved in the use of force. So when I talk about those two terms, that's what I'm talking about. In addition to doing the investigations, there are a couple other things that the legislature's asked us to do, which I think will be really important to bodies like this, who are making policy. But we are asked to analyze data and provide reports. So for the first time, you're going to have a statewide agency who's really responsible for this part of the criminal law, right? This is the first time that sort of one agency does this on a regular basis. And we will, even though now we are, you know, we are asking for help from a lot of different places, at some point in the next couple of years, we are going to be the experts statewide on how to do these investigations. We are also going to be the, sort of the holder of data about these investigations. And we're asked to collect that data by the legislature. We're asked to analyze it and provide reports about it, which we intend to do. Anti-racism continues to be a defining culture of the agency. Our training started within two months of us becoming a thing, becoming an office, and continues to be. We just had, we're in the middle of training, an anti-racism training, three-day, three-and-a-half-hour-per-day training that started on Monday. We have another session tomorrow and another one on Friday. So we are in the middle of it. It is not a talking point. It is not something I just sort of yap about. It's real. It's something that we think about every day in the work that we do. And we want to do that part of what the legislature asks us to do really, really well. The investigation, the legislature has asked us to have our investigations done at some point in the future by non-law enforcement agents. To be honest with you, that part of the statute is a little bit unclear because at the moment that I take somebody who was prior law enforcement and make them a civil investigative, civil investigator in our agency, they're no longer law enforcement. So it's a little unclear what that statute, what that part of the statute actually requires us to do. But let me tell you what we are doing to satisfy the intent or the spirit of that statute. We are going to have two tiers of investigators. One, our senior investigators, people who can hit the ground running so that as soon as we're operational, we can start doing these cases. And those folks will primarily be former law enforcement. Former law enforcement are the only folks in the state who are trained in how to do death investigations and the only people who know how to do them. And so we are really limited in using them as we get started in this, in this work. We are also hiring a second level of investigator, which is an incredibly broad range of people. We are going to be looking at folks who have done civil investigations in state agencies, city agencies, county agencies, in any number of places, like folks at LNI or any other state agency you can imagine, all have investigative parts of what they do. We're also going to be looking at younger folks who are just coming out of two, four-year colleges, who maybe have criminal justice degrees and want to, there you go. Why don't you just do that? And want to, multitasking, not my thing. And who are interested in this work, who are smart, who are logical, who get the idea of how to do an investigation. We want to give them the opportunity to do this work too as entry-level sort of trainees, people who are starting this work. We'll also be looking at law students who don't want to be lawyers, who otherwise in the past have gone on to work at the FBI and other federal law enforcement agencies, who might want to do this work instead. We're also, we want to be as broad as possible. And we're looking at people with no experience, no schooling in this, in this sort of area, but who have the soft skills to do this work, who are smart, who are hardworking, who can work a job like this, have interest in it and a passion for it, maybe have lived experience that would help in doing this work. For any of you who have followed the Manny Ellis case, I think that one of the things that stuck out for me is the investigative work done by the Tacoma Action Collective, which is a group of activists in Tacoma who went out and found a bunch of evidence and really helped make that case. So there's no magic to who makes a good investigator. There is magic, however, in making sure that whoever you hire is trained in how to do it right, who understands that in this type of work, you can't cut corners, you can't sort of be driven by a result. You have to follow the evidence and you have to do it carefully and you have to do it step by step. And if we can find folks like that with varied experience, we want to hire them and we want to have them working for us. So then the question becomes, I know that this work session came about because of the Timothy Green case and because there was a lot of public questions about where is OII? This, this, this great agency, you know, got created in 2021 and this is exactly what they should be doing. And so what I want you to know is what our priorities and what work we've done since I came onboard in June of 2022 in order to get us going as quickly as possible. So I want y'all to think a little bit about what you would need in order to start an agency from nothing. And, you know, I have worked for my entire life in government agencies and government systems that are already working. And I have worked in those agencies where change is made in those agencies. And that, think about the work that that takes by itself and the time and the energy and the resources that that requires. We, on the other hand, are starting from nothing and we're creating that culture from the ground up. And so I think about it in terms of four or five priorities. The first being hiring, which I've talked about a little bit. Just for some background, it takes about 100 days per the state website to hire somebody into state government. We've hired 18 people in six months, approximately, between 16 and 18 in six months. And so we're looking at hiring someone about every 12 days, which is an incredible clip. I will say that most of those folks have been in leadership and in places where we can get the motor running for the rest of the organization, right? So we have to create policies and protocols, which is our second priority, sort of a backgroundless skeleton for this organization so that everyone who comes in and is hired knows exactly what's expected of them, knows how we're supposed to do our work, what's important to this agency, and how we're going to show ourselves to the world in terms of what we do. And then third is training, which I think goes along with those protocols. And I think training gets sometimes like a little bit of a short shrift, like it was, yeah, training. But if you think about it, this agency has a really unique training requirement for it. I think that these guys will tell you that the training in order to do investigations and to do police work and to do that kind of work just generally is hard. And our, our folks will go through a modified BLEA training, much like every police officer goes through. We'll skip some of the stuff that's not going to apply to us, but we're going to be there for most of it. We are also going to go through, BLEA is basic law enforcement academy training, sorry. We're also going to have them go through what essentially is detective training or advanced investigative training before they start doing this work. So how to interview folks, how to collect evidence, how to analyze that evidence, how to decide what needs to be looked at, what doesn't need to be looked at. All those things that you can imagine are part of training for detectives or investigators. And then we also are going to have a big section of what we do as part of the anti-racism, anti-bias training, which is required by statute. So we're essentially taking three training programs and putting them together for anyone that comes into our agency. And then finally, well, I won't say finally. Infrastructure is something that perhaps me as sort of a, you know, I was a trial lawyer and a trial judge and I sort of just did stuff in the public eye on a daily basis, but never really thought about how all the stuff that helped me do that existed or came to be. And so I've gotten a crash course and I've learned a lot from the folks from state government who we made sure to hire, who know how to do this stuff, about the infrastructure that it takes to try to do this work. So if you think about a case management system, our security protocols, our, the technology that it takes to put together an interview room that is both secure and can record whatever happens during an interview, just our, procuring our buildings, procuring our fleet of cars that investigators will need to get to wherever they're going, the technology that needs to be in those cars so that folks can communicate with themselves, with each other. All of that has to be, had to be created from the ground up. And for those of you who've worked in state government across the street, none of that is easy to get done. It takes time and it takes working through a lot of bureaucracy, which I am so thankful to have folks like Annette and Jane and Hector onboard to help me with that. So that infrastructure is more important than I ever thought it would be. And it's been, it's taken time and energy and resources. And then finally, outreach. So this is part of the outreach we've done. And we've talked to, I'm probably getting on, what, 25 or so police agencies? Oh, there they are. It's more than that, though. We've done more since we put together this slide. So a number of law enforcement agencies across the state and then sort of law enforcement adjacent. So, you know, the U.S. Attorney's Office, which really itself isn't law enforcement, the auditor's office and folks like that, Spokane Police Ombudsman who oversees police accountability in Spokane. So we've been all over the state doing that work. We've also talked to community groups and done a lot of listening and learning from them also. And then we've talked to tribes as well, which is not on either of these slides because that is a completely different thing in talking to a different sovereign. So that's been an incredible amount of work as well. And so when folks ask what's going on, that's sort of what's going on. And I would say that when you ask about start dates, which I know is one of the questions that y'all asked ahead of this, ahead of this work session, the day we start doing new investigations is completely dependent on how quickly we can hire investigators. And I know that you've probably heard the undercurrent about how difficult it is to hire law enforcement from law enforcement agencies. Being able to do that for us, and we're in sort of this niche, niche area, which is very different, has been hard. And we continue to do the work. We have a number of investigators that are, you know, in the process of being interviewed or going through background checks. We have a couple that have been made conditional offers, who have accepted those conditional offers. So we are making progress, but that is the main barrier between us and starting, doing investigations. On the positive side, we will begin handling the old investigations, the prior cases. We'll begin inviting those to be submitted to us, probably in March of this year. Anything else we got here? Look at that. So I just talked for a really long time. And I apologize if I, if that was too much, but we, we're doing a lot. I'm so excited about this agency and where it's going and the folks that I have working with me. And I want to answer any questions that y'all have about what we're doing and what we intend to do. Yeah?
Sure, Councilmember Parshy, followed by Councilmember Wen.
Just to curiosity, you said when you commented this is primarily an investigative body, that prosecution will happen somewhere else. What, what does that look like? Say you were doing one in Olympia, how would you figure out who's going to prosecute or look to see if there's prosecution needed?
So it's funny you ask that. We were just at 4:00 this afternoon. We were all huddled around our computers watching the House, I don't know what it's called now, but the Law and Justice Committee, talking about a new bill for an Office of Independent Prosecution, which the legislature is now considering. If that passes, then what we do becomes very simple because the bill will tell us exactly what to do. And I think that the bill is suggesting that we refer our cases to both the, a special unit, the independent prosecutor, that'll be under the Attorney General, as well as the local county prosecutor. But if I can just pull back for a second, when we finish our cases, our work product will be a comprehensive report that describes the facts that we uncovered, what we, what happened to the best that we can figure it out. And then a very detailed description of the investigation that we did. So there's no question about who we interviewed, how we interviewed them, what we did, what evidence we collected, what evidence we tested, et cetera, which is often a concern from folks, both in the community and in law enforcement, about sort of how these investigations go. And we will also do a little bit of legal analysis in that report, ending before a conclusion. So we will give the prosecutor, hey, here are the statutes that might apply, you know, murder, manslaughter, whatever. And here are the elements that you would need to prove if you wanted to prove these cases. Here are the, here are the facts that we uncovered that may apply to those elements. It is up to you to answer the question of X, Y, Z and leave it to the prosecutor whose job it is to make those decisions. Currently, getting around finally to your, to your real question, we legally can only submit those reports or submit those referrals to the local prosecutor who has jurisdiction. Just the only place we can do it. The governor has the ability, in particular cases, depending on the circumstances of the case, to ask the Attorney General to take those cases or ask a special prosecutor to be assigned. But that's a case-by-case basis. So it's the only place we can, it's the only place we can submit them right now.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say thank you to all of you. I've said this to some of you before we started. I'm glad you're here today and I'm glad you're here in Washington. And I appreciate the approach, the very careful approach that you're setting up, a system that will be thoughtful and do the job that we hope it will. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Councilmember Wen, followed by Mayor Protem Gilman.
Thanks. Speaking of thoughtful approaches, it sounds like you're having quite a thoughtful approach to policies and procedures around how you're going to accept cases. And I'm wondering if that is just during, so your sort of startup phase for the agency? Or if you, if that's discretion that you'll always have?
I don't want to cut you off, but it will always exist because we will always have discretion. The statute specifically says we have discretion. And with 225 cases, like I can't quite see a time that we're going to have the resources to deal with every single one of those cases. Now, maybe they will, we will be so amazing in the first three years that we do this that they're going to be like- that they're going to be like, let's give these folks all the resources and money that they could possibly want, and then maybe we would. But I, I really don't see that happening anytime soon. So we will always be exercising some discretion in these cases. And I think that, I think your question is, is really important because that is one of the huge concerns for law enforcement, rightfully, that, hey, here's this new agency that's under the governor and there's politics involved and, you know, some of these cases are high profile, some of them are not. How are y'all deciding on whether to take these cases? And are we just, are we just the, sort of the end user of a political decision? And so we are incredibly mindful of that. We don't want that to, to happen. And our decision-making on those policies about whether we take a case will be very objective. So right now, that objective line is cases that result in death. If we sometime in the near future have the resources to do more, then, and we haven't set these policies yet, we're still in the process of it, perhaps it will be, you know, critical injury or we'll use something that's in the criminal statute like substantial bodily harm or great bodily harm. We will find objective ways to decide whether to take the case, not just because it was in the newspaper on Thursday.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. So in the interim, I'm sure there's a lot of folks, probably mainly advocates, but thinking about, well, what do you suggest we do in the interim? Certainly with the, with the Timothy Green case, it's not as if, you know, we hadn't done anything. So we have been taking actions as a city organization, but I just wonder about, like, is there, until you are all, you know, ready, I guess, is there a somewhat public dashboard to see where you're at in the queue and where your case is? How do people sort of follow what's going on?
So we have a public website and I, if you'd like, I can turn it over to Hector to describe a little bit about what that looks like right now. And that will give you an idea of sort of where we are. It won't give you a lot of detail, but it'll give you an idea of where we are. Once we open up prior cases, old cases, for submittal for investigation, hopefully in March, there will be ways to track those cases that have been submitted. And I can let Hector expand on that a little bit if you want.
Hi. I just want to clarify, is your question about currently, how can you stay up to date on an investigation being conducted by an IIT right now? Or are you asking, how will we do that? The latter.
It's the second one, I believe, but how does the, so I'm more thinking of how does the public, or I guess me, keep, keep track of where a case lands, if, you know, for whatever reason, if, if it's in the queue and you're about to decide whether or not you're going to take it, or if you're already working on it?
Okay. Not used to these numbers. Something about the microphone, suddenly it's like, oh my God, there's a microphone and just like, whoa. So we don't have those features up on our website yet. Our website is O I I dot W A N dot gov. So you can go and see, right now, it's most of the basic content about the agency. But because we're not actually investigating cases yet, we don't have the webpage where we would post that kind of information. But when we are, yeah, we will have a feature on our website that essentially indicates that we've accepted a case, here's its status. We'll have the information in there about the involved, you know, which involved agency does this, you know, include? And when completed, you know, where to find the report once that's made publicly available. So those are the types of features we'll, we'll have on the website so that people can track a case as it's progressing through the system. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, just to tie a bow on it and make some room for more questions, but will we also, I guess when it's up and ready, will we also be able to, I guess what I'm really asking is, are you, are you keeping a list now for cases to be considered?
You mean cases that have already, of incidents that have already occurred? Okay. I think for that, I think, I think Jessica Berliner might be better, in a better position to address that.
I don't think we currently have a list, but for instance, and we know cases that have been submitted to the governor, governor's office and they're waiting for us to be up and running to review them. And we've received some things in the mail that I think will fit into that category once we are ready. But starting hopefully in March, when we will publicly announce that we're ready, then anybody will be able to submit them. And then we will keep a list as well as when they came in, who it, who it involved and where it is in the queue of, of us being able to review it. I would point out that our review of prior investigations is dependent on our resources and we have to prioritize any new cases. So we're hoping by starting this process early, we'll get ahead of all of those ones that are waiting. So when we are finally ready to go out to the scene, we will have addressed some of those ones that we know folks have been waiting for us to be ready for.
All right. I've got Mayor Protem Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Great. This is the first time in, I don't know, just about eight years on council that I really wish I was on the other side of the table. I'm, I'm pretty envious of what you're, what you're working on. One, one question that comes up for me is, as you're establishing ways to engage with community and best practices for investigation, how, how will what you're doing and the model you're creating impact local agencies and independent investigation team consortiums of agencies? Is there a, is there a specific plan for disseminating your best practices to the rest of the, the folks investigating cases?
He's such a liar. Yes. Well, yes, in terms of our policies and procedures are going to be public. And so we will, there's, there's going to be no secret about what we do. And they will be posted on our website, they will be available for, for anyone to review. We have been using current IITs to help us with sort of the skeleton of those policies. So they are going to be very aware of what we are doing and how we're doing it. I think that the question you asked, though, probably is something that I can't answer. I think a lot of that's going to depend on if we are, if we do this work well and if we are successful, that it will have that impact. That people will look and say, okay, how are these folks doing this? How are they doing it? And I'm hopeful that it impacts not only this state, but others as well, and that that really will be the, the change that helps, that perhaps it spreads a little bit.
Roger, I share your optimism about that and that's why I asked the question.
Can I just add something? I, one, our policies will specifically involve or describe how we, we will communicate and interact with the involved agencies. And we also have communication, as you've seen, with broad law enforcement organizations. And imagine that when we announce we're ready to go and that those policies are available, we'll let them know so that they can inquire or review them and ask questions and, just the same as anybody else, so that they will know those are available. I hope, anyway, that's the plan.
All right. Next, I have Councilmember Cooper, followed by Councilmember Payne.
Thank you for giving us your evening. It's also a little bit envious of the project because it's important and, you know, finding that balance between, you know, figuring out where a crime occurred and, you know, a large group of people that have given their lives to defend our communities is not an easy task and, but it's one that we all know we need. And so I really appreciate the time. I wanted to make a comment and then I'll, kind of a question is, one thing that I, that bothers me about the current system, and I got more bothered by an independent prosecutor is, we have prosecutors in the Constitution that are the accountability to the voters locally. And I'm struggling with the, the conflict definition that defers that to somewhere else. And so I just want to put that comment in public on the table as you're looking at policy and law around how to bring accountability to, you know, the, the community in the jurisdiction. But I get the difference in the independent role too, so I know that's, that's a tough one. My, my, my biggest curiosity is around the interaction with the independent investigation team. And I think the way you've described it, you know, at the point where there's a handoff, then you have jurisdiction over that investigation while the IIT might be in parallel to another crime that they know happened. So in that situation, I, I'm curious how our community volunteers that are tasked with that incident as part of the IIT, will, will, will they stay attached to this and watch the, the progress of the investigation like they would for an IIT? And then just my biggest frustration with this whole IIT process, which I think has come together generally okay based on my read of, also something new, is there's zero communication with a governing body where a critical incident happened. Like, we don't know any of the details until we see a report, maybe even in the news. And, and so I just want to encourage, you know, I'm most curious about those volunteers, but want to encourage you as you're thinking about where policy and procedure can allow, what I think is totally allowable in executive session law, a briefing to the governing body as this, as an investigation goes along, so that they have some sense of what's happening.
Can you tell me a little bit about the volunteers that you're talking about? Because I don't, I'm not, I don't think I know about it.
Let Jay do it because I don't know the name. I couldn't remember it, so.
Community reps.
Yes. Do you want to talk about that?
So one of the positions we're going to have at our agency is also called a community representative. And we're still sort of wrestling with how many we'll have. Their primary function is to engage with community organizations in an area where an incident has occurred. And how they define those community organizations, they'll have some latitude with that. That could include a local city council or a local other government body that simply wants to stay informed about what's going on with an investigation. And that's one of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing consistently around all the regions where we operate, so that people are kept informed. Obviously, within the structure of an ongoing investigation, whatever can be shared, we will share. And engagement with the community is one of, one aspect of, of the statute and one of the things that we plan to implement when we have those positions filled.
So just as a more specific follow-up, one of our community, or two of our community volunteers would get, would roll out at 2:00 AM, just like the IIT. Do they stay with the case and get to sit with the investigators and watch it because our city council has tasked them? Or does that handoff relieve them of duty in that case?
Okay. So I was just going to, so.
Oh, sorry.
So the IIT community representatives, that will, there's nothing in our statute that would alter the IIT and their community representative system. But there's also nothing that would prevent our community representative, our staff member, from engaging with the volunteers who serve as community representatives as part of the IIT structure. So they could plug in with them, they could keep them informed, but the way our agency is getting stood up, we will have staff members on our staff who will be doing that kind of work and will be filling that sort of a role. It won't be a volunteer position.
And I think that the community reps pursuant to the WAC are going to stick with the IITs.
Okay, that's, yeah.
And that would be.
Because I'm seeing them as our one independent look, right? And so we're getting ready for, I think, for the first case we had, to convene an after-action review with that community group. And, and, and so, just as you're thinking about policy and procedure, it would be phenomenal if those same two people could be in the case from the first minute until the end, so that we have some consistency in the handoff for this, from the city perspective. Just a thought.
With, sorry, thank you. I, in the question of whether the IITs are continuing to work on part of the case or concurrent investigation, are they still required by the WACs to have the community reps do the conflict analysis and all of that? And so I don't think we can interfere with that, but be interested what they, how they work with you folks in keeping you apprised and whether that is something that we can build in. Because I'm not, and I'm not sure I know exactly. I know what they do from an IIT's perspective on the scene, but what they in return do to keep people informed could be something that we would think about, how do we incorporate that to our community rep positions? Great question.
And if I could just add one thing to that, we'll, we'll follow up with, with the Capital Metro IIT as well, because I know a lot of the IITs maintain a list of the community representatives, sort of engaging with, with those that are involved is something we can, we can certainly follow up on. One thing I mentioned to one of your colleagues is that there's variety in the level of involvement from the community representatives that some of the IITs have. It sounds like here locally, you have significant interest. I was surprised when I heard the number of people who apply for these positions. That is not the case in every jurisdiction. So there's definitely something we can consider.
All right. I'm going to go to Councilmember Payne.
Yes. Good evening and thank you so much for being here. This is a, a full circle moment for me, actually. I served as internal staff on the Governor's Independent Investigations Task Force a couple years ago. And so I sat in every meeting when this was just an idea. And there was a lot of back and forth about your scope and, you know, all of that work. And so to see your faces, to see real people behind, all of that work is, is really cool. I do have some questions about, you kind of touched on it a little bit, about your discretion to accept process. And I'm just kind of wondering, is that going to be sort of like, is that established already? Is it a trial and error kind of thing? It seems a little bit of both, maybe? And I was just wondering if you could maybe, you know, expand on that a little more.
It will not be trial and error. It will be a lockdown policy. It is still being finalized. We've written the policy around it. It's still in draft form. One of the things that we are doing in order to ensure equity in anti-racism is we are running many of our policies past our advisory board, as well as other stakeholders. And so we're still in that process, but it will not, like, from my perspective, the worst thing that could happen is for us to, in any way, look like the decision on whether to accept a case is sort of a willy-nilly, how does the director or his staff feel today? It's got to be locked down. It's got to be clear for the community and it's got to be clear for law enforcement.
And just on that a bit, I was wondering if you could clarify kind of how you'll prioritize the cases. It will be sort of like in order of the date received? Like, how, how will you be determining that?
I'll let Jessica answer that question, but I just want to make sure we're talking about case, older cases that were previously investigated that we're now bringing back.
Both new and old.
In terms of the old cases, I think it is our intent, and we haven't, as Roger mentioned, we do, run many things by the advisory board and we're required to consult with them on our prior investigation policy. So we're in the process of doing that. But I think it's our intent to propose that we just do them in order in which they're received, so we can have a queue that is essentially something that people can see on the website. What is going to be hard is those, those might take time. We're going to have some that are simply not going to meet the criteria and that will be pretty easy to figure out. And there's going to be some that I'm guessing we're going to get submissions that include an entire lawsuit, a civil lawsuit, that we'll have to be reviewing as well. So they will take time, they will be based on resources, and certainly, once we start responding, we don't know how many we'll, we'll be responding to and how complex. With regard to the new investigations, that I think is what Roger was referring to, before we even start, you'll have a policy. For instance, it probably will be, as we start, we're only taking fatalities. And then at some point down the road, we will expand that and have written established criteria.
Thank you. I see you have a legislative director and so, you know, my, my question in that regard is around that specific piece of the R C W that talks about non-law enforcement officers as investigators. And I was just wondering if, you know, do you see yourself playing a part in legislation, you know, advocating for legislation to bring about civilian investigators? Or, or how, how will this office ensure that it complies with what is, is written in the statute?
That's a great question. So for this year, because we're not operational, we are not bringing forward any legislative concepts in the, in the 23 session. Roger has made it clear that for us to understand what we need to bring forward and some of the legislative changes that we're looking at, we want to be operational first so that we can put that in. As far as non-law enforcement, again, what, in the legislation, what it says is we have to have a process or a report on how we plan advisors, and to understand better, really, what the clarity and the intent of that language is in that law. As you heard him say earlier, you know, we're still trying to understand, determine what really truly is the intent of having a civilian-led Office of Independent Investigations after a certain period of time. So, those are still some of the things that we're working through, and I know that's sort of a, a non-answer, but, you know, as we're trying to stand up this organization, those are some of the things that we're trying to get clarity on.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I do remember that there being a whole lot of discussion about making sure that that was a part of, of this all, because it was really important for some of the task force members, that there be some aspect of non-law enforcement investigating these types of cases, uh, which is why it's there. But, um, and then lastly, you know, I, I'm just curious about, uh, your outreach. I know that, um, again, with the task force, there was a lot of consulting, uh, other jurisdictions like California, Canada, to see how, how their processes are, how, how do they, uh, conduct these types of investigations, things like that? And I was just wondering, uh, you showed us a lot of, of your, uh, local and community engagement, but I was just wondering, are you consulting other, other places that do this type of work to help inform your work?
Sure, um, yeah, the simple answer is yes. Uh, one of our consultants, uh, paid consultants, is the person who stood up the Bridge Columbia, um, Independent Investigations Office, uh, Dr. Richard Rosenthal. Um, we also have, um, consultants from Colorado, their forensic lab, uh, talking about how they do their work. And then I've been in contact with, um, the Maryland group that does this work. They are under the Attorney General's Office, and they employ law enforcement, but the idea is for them to be independent from the local law enforcement agencies that are involved in these incidents, so it's similar. And then as part of that, we've become, uh, a member of a larger group of independent investigators, mostly under Attorney General's offices, uh, nationwide, and so I have an opportunity on a monthly, bimonthly basis to sit down with them and, uh, share information. And then I just wanted to, Councilmember Payne, I just wanted to go back to that last question you had. There will be civilian investigators, like, we're hiring them. Um, we're hiring people who are not law enforcement, who have never been in lost law enforcement. And so, when we write that plan, I think it's in a few years, we have to put that together and submit it to the legislature. It will include, what is it, December of this year?
Yes.
All right. This year, five years from now, we'll get it done. But we have to have a plan for how to do that, and I think that depending on how you read that statute, if the question is, you know, do you have a plan to, to use civilian investigators? Yeah, we're, we're already hiring them. If the question is, do you have a plan for them all to be civilian, then we have to, we have to have a further conversation with the legislature about exactly what that means, because, um, does that mean anyone who's previously been in law enforcement is expected to not be part of this organization? And do they really want us firing people who are incredible investigators, who have, um, bought into the mission of this office, and who care deeply about it, um, and have left a lot of their law enforcement life behind? Do they want us firing those folks? I don't think so. And so, we need to have a, I think, a further discussion, and, um, that's a discussion that we'll have down the road.
Thank you all. Again, full circle moment. Good to see your faces, that there are real people behind this work. Best of luck to you. Thank you.
All right, you good? All right, I just had a, a couple clarifying questions. You'd mentioned that your teams cannot be used to investigate any use of force incidences that involve federal, uh, law enforcement, so that would be FBI, CIA, DOJ. We've had a situation or, or two in our community where those folks have been, come into our community and have, uh, been involved in a use of force that resulted in death. We're just supposed to just look the other way, and not?
Local police, if that makes sense.
So, yeah, so that, that was a task force that did involve some local law enforcement.
So, you're, um, stepping right into our nightmare, and, um...
Good.
So, welcome. Um, so there, you know, we, we've met with, um, the US Attorney for the Western District of Washington, as well as the Eastern District of Washington, and we've had conversations that involved federal law enforcement. I think that the legislature rightfully realized that they don't have authority over federal law enforcement agents, um, and there is a process, um, under federal law for, uh, investigation of federal law enforcement agents who use force, and that would be the, that would be the, the way that those cases are investigated or are handled. I also know that, um, oftentimes, those federal agencies allow state agencies to do that investigation, um, and I'm not sure, frankly, whether, because of our statute, which only allows us to handle cases related to Washington Commission Law Enforcement, whether we would have the authority to do that? And then, there's a huge question about task force, task forces. So, you know, our thought is, local officers who are involved in a federal operation when something happens, um, are they federal? Are they state? They certainly would still be Washington Commission Law Enforcement Officers. Who's paying them? Who's liable for them? There's a lot of questions that go into that, and we are still working on those legal questions, and I would not want to try to answer them for you here today.
That's very interesting. A little unsettling. Uh, my next question are kind of a, something to pose to really everybody around the table, um, in that we have, is, I-940 was who, uh, set up the community member on the, the, you know, independent investigation team? And then we have your group that's gonna be up and running soon with a lot of civilian investigators involved. We have a lot of, obviously, you know, a lot of interest in this, in this area, and hence the amount of people we had apply for the, you know, the six people, we needed, like, sixty? How many people?
Eighty plus.
Eighty plus. Um, hey, we should let them know about this. Um, but, we also have, you know, a social justice and equity commission that's very interested in propping up an additional civilian level in, in best.
Oversight.
Oversight, uh, for public safety, a model for police oversight. Where would you see that layering in with all these other layers?
Well, I would say that our authority is very specific and very limited, and frankly, should be relatively quick. We are given a hundred and twenty days to complete these investigations. Now, that hundred and twenty days can be extended, you know, for good cause that we can explain.
Sure.
But, you know, we are, we are authorized to do criminal investigations only, so we do not do administrative investigations for, um, for an agency. We don't get involved in, um, collective bargaining agreements, or anything having to do with whether someone gets fired, or whether someone keeps their job, or whether they're certified by the CJTC. We are only authorized to conduct criminal investigations to determine whether or not there's criminal liability on behalf of anyone who was involved, or any officer who was involved. And so, my, you know, the way I look at that is that we are gonna do our work, we're gonna be in, do our work, you're gonna get an incredible report, and we're gonna be out. And all the rest of those, um, oversight mechanisms will continue to work. We will provide whatever information we are permitted to, to those agencies, um, at the time that we're permitted to do it, um, and that they will be able to do the work they need to do, at the same time we're able to do the work we're able to do. I mean, I just don't see them hurting each other.
Thank you for that, and also explain the level of, of training that you are having your civilian, uh, investigators go through. I, I think that's just something we, we need to kind of just tuck away when we're thinking about our own civilian oversight committee, you know, what kind of training are we gonna be able to provide them, so they really are effective, so. Um, I think we've reached our conclusion, and we've got a 7:00 PM meeting we need to reset the room for, so thank you again so much, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, seeing how things roll out.
Thank you all for having us, it's great.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.